All right, is this a motion to reopen the public hearing?
So move.
Second. Oh, in favor. Okay. So we're open here, public hearing. And we open it downstairs. Appreciate everybody coming and glad we accommodate folks up here. Sorry for the shuffle. So do we have somebody from the Dalton American Legion Post who wants to sort of give us a...
Yes, if I may, my name's Attorney Jeffrey Clifford. I represent the Dalton Association, Building Association, William B. Dalton. With me is Paul Anastasio, who is eighty percent owner. And next to him, members of the board, is Matthew Nelson, who is eighty and twenty percent owner of the association.
I have a sign-in sheet. For those who are here in favor, just keep turning the page. For those who are opposed, I'll have another sign-in sheet. You can see. I'm sure that there's many opposed.
So you mentioned, so I guess one thing that I'm trying to understand is the nonprofit versus the for-profit. It's one entity, correct?
It is one entity that will be in the building, serving alcohol, which is a building that is also an American Legion post. So the, some of the proceeds will actually be going to help support the American Legion post and to keep and encourage additional activities at the post. I've even had some discussions in that regard regarding what those activities will be specifically. And, you know, as revenue comes into the establishment, they're hoping to actually establish a baseball team if possible, but certainly to continue with the charity work that many of the members in this room, and specifically Mr. Nelson, as well as his father, have done in the community here of Olver at large. I've had an opportunity to speak at length with both Mr. Anastasio and Mr. Nelson. And again, their desire is to cultivate a location that will be of service to veterans in the community and one where they're not excluding veterans that are not Legion members. So they want to be able to serve, for example, if they have a gathering, persons that are members of the Marine Corps League, persons that are members of the DAV, persons that are members of the Purple Heart Association, and also civilian persons in the neighborhood that wish to contribute and help support the community as well. So again, this is a private entity, but they're themed and their desire is to help the community and to do it through the American Legion post, which is on the premises.
That's actually how the Legion is set up. The Legion by itself is not allowed to run the actual post. So it's a bylaw from the American Legion. So they don't allow, the American Legion can't own that building and operate the bar or the restaurant side of it. Because then if something happened, then someone could sue the American Legion as a whole. So every American Legion post, BFW post, is set up that way for those reasons.
So the, so in the past, who has, maybe you can just explain the ownership structure.
The Building Association, that Building Association is the original Building Association. So this is basically just reapplication from the previous licensure that was there, with the change of going from a club license to a public license.
And, and the, the Building Association has existed, and then prior, going back a couple of years, what was the entity that actually ran the club?
It was, yeah, it was the same entity.
Oh, it was the building. I thought you would mention that they never ran.
No, no, the Building Association.
Building Association.
Owned one nineteen twenty-one. So that's set up obviously by the Legion for that reason, because the National American Legion doesn't own buildings or operate barrooms or restaurants, whatever you want to call it. So that's why they set up.
So every, every post worldwide has a Building Association that owns and maintains the building, and then the American Legion are the tenants.
So the American Legion, is it a separate Board of Directors?
It's the, it mirrors it. It's the same.
It's the same. So are we deviating from that here?
No.
No.
It's actually better than it has been in the past.
There's, if I may, there's, you know, these gentlemen over here, you know, at the State House level and district commanders of the American Legion, they may be able to explain it a little bit better, if they're comfortable speaking.
Right. Hold on, let me, sure. Because I want to make sure that your application is correct. Because the building, so the Building Association of the William B. Dalton Post 137 American Legion, that's a nonprofit corporation?
No.
No.
But that's what the corporate filings say in the, in the register, in the, in the Secretary of State. That's why I'm confused. And that's what the, the prior license was under, and that's what the application is.
The license has always been in, you know...
In the William, in the Building Association.
Building Association.
Yeah, and that's a nonprofit corporation.
You might be looking at old filings, but different filings, but...
Well, the fi...
So is it a for-profit?
The filings.
The Building Association is a for-profit organization.
Basically three entities to most Legions, the way around. There's the American Legion, there's a 501(c)(19) by IRS code, which is exactly for the Legion.
Do I say it really wrong?
Underneath that, you can set up like the son of the American Legion, which is a 501(c)(3). So to separate any fundraising things for, to keep it separate from the Legion. So say someone isn't up to par with their fundraising, that falls underneath the posts 501(c)(3), which is a tax exempt charity. And then you have the Building Association, which is basically separate from both of those. So if you do fundraising, you're doing fundraising underneath the posts 501(c)(3) for all your fundraising efforts. So you can collect, you can collect money, you can hold fundraisers, and all that gets filed in that organization. The American Legion as its whole, you can still fundraise through the American Legion because they're a national entity, so we can do national Legion programs from them. And the money will go to them or to the post, but I'm pretty sure it goes to the Legion, correct?
The design of the American Legion is the national organization's 501(c)(3), all nonprofit. Whether it's Building Association or Building Corporation, it's registered with the State House.
It's nonprofit.
And it's part of the nonprofit organization. The difference is that the, in order to be a member of the association, you have to be a member of the Legion post.
Okay, but I think, I was just told that they're a for-profit, the building.
The purpose of the Building Corporation or the Building Association should be shown in the, in the...
It's still nonprofit.
It's still a nonprofit, but its purpose is to provide a facility for the organization to meet and a fundraising source in order to, for the American Legion organization to promote its, all its charities and fund its charities.
So we want to help you get it right, but we can't, when you're applying for a for-profit liquor license, you're a nonprofit, I'm not sure you can do that. Just let me, just let me finish Paul, because I, you just handed me the, the name of the corporation, William B. Dalton Post 137 American Legion Building Association. That's a for-profit corporation in which you own eighty percent of an interest and Mr. Nelson owns twenty percent of the interest. There's nothing in this corporation that would suggest anything has to go to the American Legion. The application that you filed was from the Building Association of the William B. Dalton Post 137 American Legion.
Right.
Two different corporations, one nonprofit and one for-profit. The application for the liquor license was under the nonprofit, and the social security number, or the, excuse me, the federal ID number that was used in the application went to a for-profit corporation.
I got to cut you off, Bill.
Okay.
No, well, before you, before you...
Everything gets to the chair.
Okay.
Are you finished?
Yeah, that's the question, so I'm not sure. Just before everybody talks himself into something that's not accurate, the application's accurate, tax ID numbers are exactly the same. If you look at the tax ID number on the application and you reference the one that I just handed you, they're exactly the same. Same corporation, it is a for-profit, it has always been a for-profit. Building Association has always, I don't know why you're shaking your head, it's always been a for-profit corporation.
Okay. I have a corporate filing in the articles of organization.
You might have it from the American Legion.
That, and I have filings as recently as March of two thousand fourteen that this has changed.
Right, yep.
For a nonprofit corporation named Building Association of William B. Dalton Post.
That, you know what, because the taxes for the nonprofit weren't paid up to date, or a lot of them were actually, when, up in the past six years, I think we did back taxes.
Right, yeah, we paid years and years of old filings.
I might just be a clerical error on what that is supposed to state, because we had to go through all of these separate entities to bring them all up to par. The Building Association wasn't up to par, the nonprofit wasn't up to par, basically all these entities were not in good standing with the state as far as taxes, filing fees and things like that.
That's why part of the application process is certificate of good standing from DOMA, state and the federal level, which, which you have in that.
So that could just be, I think that might be a clerical error.
You did give me a certificate of good standing that runs to the for-profit corporation, not the nonprofit corporation. One of the concerns that the ABCC will have, not necessarily this board, so even if you got past this board and you went to the ABCC, they'd say, well, normally, American Legion's a nonprofit, whether or not they're the entity that is running the function facility in the barroom, it's, it's nonprofit, because people don't normally profit off the American Legion name. And I think the folks from the state would agree with that. It's a nonprofit entity. Yet here, you have a for-profit federal ID number, you gave me a certificate of good standing for a for-profit corporation that lists the name as the American Legion Bar and Grill, and the name of the application was in the nonprofit corporation. So it's an, it's unclear, to say the least, as to which entity is going to be in, and you list eighty percent, twenty percent ownership interest, and I'm not clear what ownership. Normally, there's no shares in a nonprofit corporation, it's a nonprofit corporation.
I mean, hit the shares. The shares is basically to recoup the money that has been put into, into the post.
Well, there's other ways to do that without a corporate structure that is for-profit that would give you the profits, because that would be ongoing. Let's say you got payback, right, and you got, you recouped your money, which you should recoup your money. There's no, there's nothing in the corporate structure that says, okay, you recouped your money, now it all goes to the American Legion. It doesn't say that. It's just eighty, twenty, forever. It's the corporate structure.
I got just a couple, I, I got one hand up. I just still want to clarify from the state's perspective. You had indicated that the building, the building organizations are nonprofits. I, I thought that's what you had indicated. So this is, is this a deviation from that? I'm trying to get an understanding of what the norm is and what...
We have a letter from the IRS from nineteen sixty-three, where it was issued federal tax exempt, and then they never file taxes, ever. So in nineteen eighty-six, they revoked that nonprofit status. And for the last, since nineteen ninety-two, the current, the old board and the old members were just going on massstate.gov and Secretary of State and filling out the annual reports so they could put it in their renewal package every year. So this year, we renewed it, what Bill first brought up, the old way. And what they were doing is, they were giving you the nonprofit, you know, or the profit. I, I don't know what the past year's forms look like, but, you know, they were giving you one or the other. But I can tell you, the only way that building's been running for the last thirty years is as a domestic for-profit corporation. And in order to change it back to a nonprofit, we spoke with Attorney Merrigan and John Conde worked on that as a prior commander for years, until Lenny became commander, so...
Well, I was just going to say, in nineteen eighty-seven or eighty-six, Jack Lees changed it from nonprofit to a for-profit organization, and we've been running since eighty-seven as a for-profit. So we applied every year as a for-profit. I attempted to switch it back, but it's, it's a major hurdle, and it's costly.
If you're, you have a Legion post and you're running a function hall that's let out to the public, that is a for-profit side of the operation. If you have a small Legion post and you have a bar and it's there just for the members, you pay taxes on it, but that's all private. When you rent out to the public, the old Dalton, as John said, when they changed that, they had all the public functions, that hall was rented all the time. That's, that has to have the for-profit entity in the, in the paperwork for the, for the Secretary of State.
So that seems like another layer in that whole organization. It's a members' bar and then the function hall. So you have a members' bar, it's part of the Legion post, which is ran by the members, falls under certain criteria as a veterans' post bar, different than an open bar. So this open license to keep it everything up to par is the reason why it's a for-profit, how the, like he said, the function hall was ran. You can't, you can't open up or have a function which is still a hall and charge people money and, you know, just hot, put that away into, you know, the Building Association's members' lounge, it has to be taxable, like you just can't do it.
The practice at all American Legion posts is to bifurcate it, is to separate it. And I think when it's separated within the discretion of the party that's, that's running the entity, I think it can be a nonprofit or a for-profit. And I don't, and I haven't found anything that would indicate that that's contrary to either the American Legion's bylaws or Massachusetts law.
And what's the practice? Earlier you said the practice was that they'd be nonprofits. I'm just trying to get a sense of...
Yeah, with the American Legion, the entire operation is supposed to be nonprofit unless you have a facility in a town where you open up to the public. Hall rentals, some towns, like Quincy, for example, you know, where Legion is private, you've got to be a member or else you're, you're in as a guest. Otherwise, there are other towns where it's, the bar and the Legion, the BFW, whatever it is, is open to anybody in the town. That's a different arrangement. But Dalton has always been, I've been a resident of this town since seventy-seven, I've seen a lot of the changes. The, it had always been run, you file your paperwork with the state, you incorporate for liability purposes. The eighty-twenty, as Mr. Phelan suggested, is, I don't see where there's any value of that being in any of the language in the corporation. That should have been a private thing between the arrangement for the getting reimbursed. It shouldn't exist because that changed the tone or the appearance of the corporation when you're doing that. But it's supposed to be nonprofit, five oh one three aspects go right through, right up to the point of everything they do in the Legion post, except paying the liquor taxes. And you pay like, like everybody else. But it's supposed to be all five oh one three C nonprofit, and you set up the business corporation as a separate entity or a separate for-profit fundraising source like the, the function halls.
And then does that for-profit typically pay rent to the nonprofit or...
All, it's because all the organization, all of the membership for the Building Corporation, the association, it's actually a committee of the American Legion, so you have to be a member of the American Legion. So if you take it down to that level, it's all the veterans, the five oh one c three, National Agent for the American Legion, I mean the National Judge Advocate, separates it completely. Legion is a nonprofit. If you have a business as many posts to do with bars, then that's for-profit. There are many places around the country where we have Legion posts where, or be it BFW or any other, where that's the social center of the community, not necessarily here where we're much more compacted in terms of population. And they're run that way, and all of them run the same way. There is the separate business side that pays its taxes, and after the taxes are paid, any of the money that's profit that remains after the taxes are paid running that business go back to the original purpose of the business, which is to fund it back into the Legion so the Legion can fund its programs and charities.
Right.
So it all comes back in that way, after it all taken care of.
I don't think that's the way this has been set up.
It's not the way that's written.
No. And the nonprofit was involuntarily revoked in nineteen eighty-six, but it was revived in nineteen ninety-five. Corporate filings, as recently as March of this year, for the nonprofit, so if, let's say the board approves this tonight, as, as it's set up, number one, it's a for-profit, totally for-profit. There is no members' lounge, there is no members' anything, it's just a, an open barroom, as it's set up, I'm just telling you, as it's set up right now. So there is no bifurcation, because there's only one entity, and that is the for-profit bar and grill.
And the...
That has the American Legion post, and it's a for, and it's unclear whether it would be a for-profit or nonprofit, because the federal ID number goes back to a for-profit corporation, but the name of the entity is a nonprofit corporation. So the nonprofit corporation can't get, I think I should correctly point out, a for-profit liquor license.
You need the ID for tax purposes anyway.
Right.
And that's principally why you have the number.
Yeah.
Why you have the FID.
So I guess, I, I'm not sure where to go here. The board could approve it, and then it'll be, I know that the, the ABCC is not going to, is not going to pass it in the, in the structure that it is.
Well, the ABCC is actually the one that directed us to do it exactly this way, so...
Well, I, I...
To the T, this is exactly how it was outlined to be.
Corporations are like different individuals. The analogy is, I'm applying for a liquor license and I'm using Tim's social security number to do it. Can't do that. And that's what, the way this is being applied.
Talking the Building Association versus the American Legion?
Yeah.
That's the common practice.
And it's... No, I, I bet, I'm willing to guess that if there, if there is a for-profit, if there is a for-profit, like you said, there's a lot, there's a members' club and there's a club license, and then there's a liquor license for the, for the entertainment and the, and the function facility, and they're separate. But the understanding is, because the American Legion name is being used, that the profits from the for-profit function facility are going into the American Legion nonprofit agency that owns the property. And the property is owned by the nonprofit corporation, the one that you listed as to... Well, the town records reflect that the Building Association of the William B. Dalton Post 137 American Legion owns the property. That corporate, Inc., that corporation is a nonprofit corporation. It doesn't have a, the federal ID number for that is different than the for-profit corporation. It, and if the, the ABCC match, you know, takes the, the federal ID number and it comes back to a for-profit corporation, and the name is a nonprofit corporation, it's not going to prove the liquor license. Sure it won't.
How is the name different? The initials?
No, it's, 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 there's two different corporations. One has the Building Association first, one has William Dalton Post first.
If, if the for-profit entity, Mr. Town Manager, is making a profit and then putting the profit into the nonprofit, doesn't that by definition make it a nonprofit entity? And thus why would any of it be set up as for-profit entity?
There's nothing in the corporate documents for the for-profit corporation that says that's going to happen. In fact, what it says is, is X amount of shares in a for-profit corporation, and there's an eighty percent interest in Mr. Anastasio, and there's a twenty percent interest in Mr. Nelson. So the profits would run accordingly.
But what, what the point is, is, I think we're taking as gospel the fact that for-profit entities attached to an American Legion post pour all of their money back into the Legion, which I disagree with. I would also, I would also note that as far as bifurcation goes, if I may clarify what I meant on that, you have a liquor dispensing entity, and then you have the Legion, not a separate liquor dispensing entity just for members in the Legion. So typically, and I've seen this set up at the Marine Corps League, for example, you have, you know, your, your membership, the membership uses the bar that the, that the public would use as well, and, and the membership also has a separate area where they vote and where they, where they do the business of the Legion. So I, what I'm suggesting is that's how this would be bifurcated. It's bifurcated like that at, at other Legion posts, it's bifurcated like that, as I indicated at, in many Marine Corps League posts, many DAV posts as well. So what we're suggesting is, is again, there's going to be an entity within this building that is a for-profit entity that does make money, where these two individuals do profit, but where there is also a Legion post that will benefit significantly from the presence of this entity, like many other Legion posts.
I think that, to be, if that's what you're looking for, and the American Legion is okay with it, which I, I doubt it will be, but you guys run it up the, the, you know, the command and figure it out if, if that's okay. But even with that, the way that this license, you know, and I wish we had an opportunity, you were representing that, we would have been able to try to figure this out before him, but the way it's set up now, there's only one entity. There's not, there's not a members' lounge. You can't have a members' lounge. You have, you're applying for one full liquor license. It's open to the public and would be open to the folks from the American Legion, from the, you know, various veterans groups, and, and anyone who's a veteran or not a veteran. But the American Legion post name is there, is on it, and it's completely for-profit. But the name that's applied is a nonprofit American Legion. So even if you were attempting to do it that way, it's not, it's, it's not set up properly.
I have the very first page of the retail alcoholic beverage license application, and then I have a document from the IRS from December thirtieth, nineteen sixty-eight, and the building names are exactly the same. Building Association of William B. Dalton Post 137 American Legion, Inc. So I can pass this around if you guys would like to see it.
Couple of things, I got a few people I have, yeah. Sir, would you just say the name and...
Well, frankly, I used to be the business manager from eighty-seven to ninety-two, I believe. It was my belief in all the paperwork, even back in the old original articles of the corporation, the Building Association was always the Building Association of the William B. Dalton Post American Legion, Inc. If the Legion owned the association, the association just was a board of members willing to put their names on the line for getting sued and taking the brunt if anything happened, because the national organization of the American Legion does not recognize Legions owning property, buildings on their own. That's, that was mentioned earlier. The part I don't understand here, the eighty, twenty percent, was the Legion Building Association sole?
The reason, reason behind that, which is, no, that's Legion business, but the remodel, which we've been in for a year, started off as a small project that turned into a two-hundred-thousand-dollar project. The ultimate goal is to get that Legion fully operational to be the heartbeat of the community, which I've seen work in other Legions that I've been a member of. And I started out as a member in Olver, and, you know, they... and, you know, they really weren't doing a lot, so I got more involved in other Legions that were doing things. So the goal is to get that place squared away, get it 100% sprinkled and get the members lounge downstairs up the code. And then you would be back to 100% of where it's supposed to be. Right now, we aren't 100% capable of having a members lounge and a function hall. And a function hall in the past has been what generates income to pay the bills. And for the past year, you know, me and Paul have been paying the bills. It's $5,000 overhead every month. So-
For an empty building?
You can't-
I, I wanna see things work, but-
I'm just trying to clarify something.
I understand that.
The whole picture.
Right.
So all these different entities, pieces have been a nightmare to straighten out.
Part of, I, I can understand that. I think we, I think there's gotta be some more straightening out, to be frank. That part of the, the application showed that the property was purchased for $51,000. I, I don't know if there was a transfer of the property.
Mortgage on it for 200 and something from the original price. So it's been refinanced and just basically been crumbling for the past-
Building was in foreclosure.
Foreclosure.
You know, I understand, but there was a purchase of the building. It's listed that the property was purchased for $51,000.
Because it asks, on the application, it asks for, for that information.
Right.
Otherwise, there's no reason to state it. Cause again, that's, I mean, Legion business. That's the executive order of the American Legion.
It seems to me, just if I can clarify so I understand where the town is coming from.
You tell us how it's gonna, it's gonna be squi-, there's a big investment in this property. There's a lot of work done. I'm told it's a beautiful spot, so it's- It's always been a club license in the past. And now, there's, there's a request to make it a, basically an all, you know, open to the public entity for profit. That's different. That's, it's different. If, if that, if that in fact is what the request is gonna be, I, I'm, I think you need to do a couple of things. One, reapply as a nonprofit because you applied, I mean, reapply as the for-profit and not a nonprofit. And then get a letter from the American Legion saying, "We, we, you know, are okay with you using the American Legion name for a for-profit establishment."
If I may on a-
I know, I mean, that's the problem.
It's a procedure, right?
Yeah, I mean, if I may on a few things, it is, but I just feel what I was gonna say.
Hold on, I got, I just wanna go, while you're putting your thoughts together. John, did you have something?
Well, I was just gonna say, it's like the last 10 years when I was commander, we were running under, liquor license was issued to the Dalton Club, which, doing business as the Dalton Club, which was a for-profit organization. So we were running for-profit the whole time, back then. We've been running around trying to square this thing away. I know Bill Merrigan spent two years trying to square this thing away while we tried to sell the building because they pulled different corporations and there was like six or seven out there. And now we got it down to the three that we need. And I would just ask that you kick this up to the state. You'd vote yes. Kick it up to the state. If they kick it back, cause we sat down and talked to them and they told us to do this exact thing, do it this way. And the other thing is, we're gonna be getting sprinklers pretty soon. So the occupancy right now is only 110 people or 100 people. Once we get the sprinklers, which will be like nine months out, we wouldn't have to come back and ask for the increase in occupancy back up to 300 or 350, whatever it was before. So, you know.
And that's gonna help reopen the actual members lounge.
The basement was taken from us. We couldn't, we couldn't salvage the members' bars. It was in too, it was a disaster. So the members are moving upstairs. We don't have, you know, members aren't gonna fill 3,500 square feet of, of bar and function room area. So that's why the public is to the open, so we don't have to play that game and have a sign-in book and act like somebody's, somebody's guest and sign in in order to have a, a drink and eat there. So now upstairs is members in, open to the public. There is, there is no basement anymore. It's fully good storage and office space.
The goal, our mission for this place is to do the work that we've been doing. And personally, me and Paul actually got in an argument like this to change this. And my opinion is, I think it's discriminatory to a regular civilian or a civilian supporter, which we have many in the room that work with us on a lot of charity events that we do. So how can the Moose Club, which is a very popular club, have an open membership to anybody? And then we, as a veterans' organization, which is supposed to be here for the country and the community, not allow people that wanna come help us with our projects? In the past four months, outside of the Legion, we've raised $60,000 for a double amputee in Tennessee for us. So that's the business that we're in, that I'm in. So that's all I care about.
If I may just add to that, as, as was already noted, over $220,000 have gone into this. A lot of man hours. Many of the people in this room have also gone into the, into the project. And there's been some great work done. A little background on these two gentlemen too. Paul is 35 years old. He's a Marine Corps veteran. Served active duty for four years. And he's a graduate of Blue Hill Vocational Regional. Matt Nelson's a local guy also. He is a Marine Corps veteran as well. He's 33 years old. He's a graduate of Holbrook High School. And Matt is a decorated Marine who served with myself in Fallujah, Iraq in 2006. He served again in Afghanistan in 2009. And in between, he served on the Unitas tour over in, in South America. And he's been in the Marine Corps for a total of 14 years. He's also a member of the community that's been very involved in charities. And again, that's where their hearts are. They wanna be involved in, in helping the community and, and working through the Legion to continue with their charity work and to continue to, to help Holbrook develop and, and continue to be the great town that it is. So again, they have put a lot of blood, sweat and tears into this. I do understand that, that there's some disagreement as to, as to the filing, as to whether it's profit or nonprofit. I think that can be, that can be remedied. That can be, there can be a new application if there is a mistake or if there is a misentry. For a for-profit corporation in this building association's name, that does not conflict with, again, the typical practice for the American Legion of having a for-profit entity for halls, for receptions for civilians on the same premises. The Legion can coexist as, as they do in other locations on the same facility and, and the town benefits from that. So again, like the gentleman in the back of the room, I would ask for the, for the board to vote in favor of this. Again, if there are any administrative issues that need to be addressed, they'll be addressed readily and immediately. But we'll call Anastasio and Mr. Matt Nelson.
Here, here.
The ABCC too.
We had a couple of things here. Well, I am curious how many Legion posts in the area have the full liquor license as opposed to a club license? I'm wondering how common that is.
Well, it depends on the town you're in, first of all, and the, where they control the liquor licenses, but-
Just if I may just put a record, if this gentleman just couldn't identify himself.
George Nicholson.
Thank you, sir.
A resident here in the town for 37 years.
Thank you.
The, most of the posts in this area do have a function hall of some kind. You can go up to the Braintree Legion, has a function hall, doesn't have a bar. But they operate the same way. And I think the problem should be, can be solved with an amended application to the Secretary of State. Putting the building association of the Dalton Post as the separate legally incorporated entity that can accept the for-profit status because the nonprofit status of the American Legion remains invalid. Cannot be associated directly. National organization will have nothing to do with it. If they were to take this problem to the national judge advocate for the American Legion, Legion Stop Lawyer, the lawyer would tell him, he's told everybody, "That's a bar operation. That's a business. That's got nothing to do with the Legion. You're on your own for that." So if you didn't do all the due diligence to set up your nonprofit status, your corporate status, protect the taxes, the liability and all that, then that would be on you. And when we, when you redo it, I would suggest that the 80/20 business, that's something that belongs, once the corporation is set up, that should be defined within, internally in the bylaws of the corporation.
Right. It's in there. I don't even know why it's in there.
They shouldn't be, they shouldn't be in the articles of incorporation.
I'm still trying to get an understanding of how common it is for an association, an organization such as the American Legion to have something beyond a club license.
Almost all of them.
Almost all of them.
Every one in Randolph.
Every one around this area, yeah.
Common.
Ambed.
Ambed.
Is it, is it both a club license and a, and a full liquor license?
Yep.
Operated by a separate entity? Yeah. That's, that's what I thought. But there's, in, in, in this, so there's two, actually, now that you said it, for example, in the Elks in Quincy,
Right.
you have an entity that operates the function facility separate. The Elks rents, leases that property and hold it to that entity. And they're a for-profit agency, but they also have a, a, a club license. So there's actually two li-, two liquor licenses. There's a club license for the members and then there's a, a separate function facility liquor license for, for the function room.
I think that has to be designated as a separate business because I don't think one premises is allowed to have two liquor licenses.
It's gotta be, it must be condo or rented out or something.
That would basically be what happened once we get the members lounge back up and running. Either it'll fall underneath the Dalton Post license or it would be a club license, which would fall underneath all the same benefits and restrictions as a veterans' club.
Which is why, as I indicated, you know, Marine Corps League, for example, if they have a liquor license and they allow the public and they only have one bar, they're not gonna have two separate bars. And, and that's typically the reason why the members will, will drink at the same location as the, you know, other non-members. And, you know, typically they might be meeting nights where, you know, there aren't many civilians or, or non-members that are present. And it may act in essence as, as a separate bar, but it's, it's really the same bar.
Mm-hmm. Now it'd be different prices.
Same liquor license, but members lounge has 50 cents cheaper advertising.
Yeah, for the last 30 years, remember, longer than that, but the Dalton, William B. Dalton Post always had a members' bar down in the basement and then upstairs was a function room, you know, for weddings and a small bar. So now there's no occupancy-
Club license.
Under a club license, the whole building.
Right.
So now, down in the basement, there's no members' bar. You know, it's gutted. We got water issues. So upstairs, it's members and open to the public. So that's the only reason why this license application has changed from a club to a restaurant because we don't wanna discriminate against others or, and we, you know, it's a 50-foot, brand-new bar, beautiful space. I mean, we wanna fill it and do good things.
All right. I, I, I can, go ahead because it's, the way it's set up now-
We're going in circles here. No offense to anyone in the room. The only expert in the state is not in this room. They're the governing body on, on the state house. And whatever the circumstances are, whatever the technicalities are or the errors made in the application, those will be sorted out by the state agency. As opposed to, "This is what I think. This is what you think." No one, you can think whatever you want, but no one knows what it is because none of us are experts in this room. So to save everybody's time, you know, I support that we just move this forward. We support, you know, the application. Even if it is in error, it'll be sorted out or it'll be denied and, and this entity will come back before us with another opportunity.
Here, here. I, I think that, you might think that's the right thing to do, but, but I mean, in speaking-
In the end, it's their license. They, you know, this is what their intention is.
I agree. I wanna point out though, the entity that applied for the liquor license is a nonprofit corporation that used a for-profit corporation's federal ID number, which is using the American Legion's name for a for-profit barroom. That 80% of the, 80% of the profits will run to Mr. Anastasio and 20% to Mr. Nelson. Whether it was intended that way or not, that is what is before this board. It's just a barroom with the using of, I'm just saying, if, if, if that's what you wanna vote for, that, that, just to be clear. Because the application, what's in the application is what, what you're voting on. It's not representations, it's not intent, it's not anything other than what's in the application. And what's in the application is 80/20 for-profit barroom that's called American Leg-, you know, the, the Building Association of the American Legion Post 137, Inc., which is the name of a nonprofit corporation. Okay, that's just what it says. That's what you're voting on.
I, I just wanna bring up a couple of other things that are in the package. There's, there's a letter here from Building Commissioner Holbrook Dan Moriarty regarding a zoning bylaw issue. Elaborate on exactly what he's referring to here.
Well, it was, it was a social club and actually dated after the filing of the application for the liquor license. There was a filing with the Secretary of States on April 17th, list changing it from a social club to a bar and grill. Because it used to be a club license and essentially that was what it was. And now it's looking for a restaurant liquor license. That's a change in use. A change in use triggers other requirements that have to, have inspected.
Yeah, if I can, if I can speak on that. One, I mean, that's not a change in use at all. I'm almost an expert at it in this town from what we've dealt with, okay? It's the same exact assembly. It's an A2, A3 assembly. And I don't know where you keep stating bar and grill. On the annual filing, it always said social club. So this particularly, because it's changed and it's not, um, how should I say it? Well, it's open to the public upstairs and to the members. We put, it's a bar and a grill. It's a kitchen and a bar.
That's where I got it. So, and that's why it's a change.
But the way you're saying it, Bill, it's not a bar and grill and me and Matt aren't gonna run out the door with all this cash and wheelbarrows. We invested a significant amount of money in the patriotism of this town.
You, you misunderstand me, Paul.
Oh, no, I hear you. I'm clear. Absolutely.
I'm not questioning your intentions. I'm just telling you what this application has. And it's, it's that that, you know, that triggers the change in use.
There's more change in use. And we have elevators.
According to the building inspector, there's a change in use.
I'm gonna read the letter from the building inspector.
What is that dated, Mr. Chen?
It's dated April 23rd, 2014.
Oh, today. Okay.
The Holbrook Board of Selectmen from Daniel Moriarty Building Commissioner. "The current use of 777 Plymouth Street is according to Section 7-7.3, Use Regulations B, Number 11, A Private Nonprofit Membership Club or Lodge. As to their application for this location to be open to the public on a daily basis would constitute a change of use. This would require a new inspection process to be determined by the Board of Health, Fire Department and the Building Department."
What is the change of use stated? Legally, it has to be stated what the change of use is.
I'm reading a letter. "Enclosed, please find copies from our zoning bylaws. Enclosed, also Section 14 regarding same as a business for gain. Should this use be granted, the occupancy load will still be 100 persons as 777 Plymouth Street is not a sprinkled building. Any further information, please do not hesitate to call."
Anybody aware what the uses are for criteria for buildings?
Yes, I-
One be commercial, one be to commercial, which is an apartment.
I need you to answer that. My one, my two effort on that.
The elevator's working again, sir.
All right. Thank you very much. And I'll use it. I don't know, anybody in this room, don't do the gavel. My name's James Crosby, okay? I almost died for this country. If the Americans in this room can't get their shit together so that we can not isolate ourselves and our room by ourselves and operate with each other in this community and do good things for this community, we will be our own downfall. and do good things for this community, we will be our own downfall. Get together, you're all sluting the same flag here. Seriously.
Amen.
Put it up to the state, put the address on the wall.
Here, here. Here, here.
James is on our executive. I'm the service officer.
I was just going to add, because I'm, I'm just getting a little confused with some of the stuff that's, you know, coming at us. Bill, did you make the statement that you thought it was your opinion, or you thought that all the revenue from a for-profit had to go to the nonprofit?
No, I didn't.
Oh, okay, then, I'm sorry, I understand, but I think the, the reason they're doing that is there's just, there's a ton of expenses.
I, I think they should be paid back, the expenses.
We have to pay overheads. We also pay fire managers that aren't me and Paul, and the Legion actually pays their agents, because that's almost a full-time job. So the National Legion or national charities, large charities, the One Warrior Project pays three hundred and fifty thousand dollars annual income to their CEOs.
Can I ask this?
They're not asking for any.
Under, under this structure and under this application, what role, if any, legal role, does the American Legion nonprofit corporation play at all?
The American Legion in Holbrook, the membership, votes for the Building Association, the board members that sit on the Building Association. That is how it's set up in the bylaws.
It's the same, it's the same board.
So every, in, in the past.
It's a board of directors.
The board of directors that run the Building Association, okay? So back to the two separate entities, American Legion, Commander, Vice Commander, Building Association, usually, which hasn't been done in the past in Holbrook, because the Holbrook Post has been ran by civilians. So they weren't even veterans or members of the actual American Legion. So now, we have changed that and fixed that, so now, the Building Association of the American Legion is ran by American Legion members.
That's, if I may.
Why don't we just do what this gentleman over here said, I mean, kick it up to the state, and if they kick it back, we'll reapply. I mean, nobody's an expert in this room, we, we could talk about this for another three hours, it's going to come back to where we are right now.
I agree.
We can't get a letter from somebody today saying that we're going to change everything or something, you know, just kick it up to the A B C C, if it comes back, we'll reapply and we vote. I mean, it's plain and simple.
Why, why can't we get Paul's lawyer and representatives from the town together and rehash this out, because there is a lot of confusion with the application, and get this all squared away and then reapply? I think that would be the smartest thing to do.
And address the building commissioner's issue as well.
The building commissioner's issue, I have to say, I take exception with the, with the date, and I, I take exception with, it's almost, it reminds me of, you know, how many bubbles in a bar of soap. We're here for the hearing today, and there's a letter today where they're, where they're making this, this issue.
What's funny, too, is the building inspector doesn't work on Wednesdays, it's Tuesdays and Thursdays.
Here, here.
We'll just wait an hour and a half to read that.
Paul, you know where to find, all right?
Stop with the wise remarks.
It was always, it was always under the impression, dealing with you from the beginning, and by the way, I will say, extremely helpful in the process of rebuilding, extremely helpful in the process of rebuilding this, was always under the impression that it was going to be a Members Lounge. Even in your diagram that you presented in support of the application, it shows a function facility and a, a separate area. The impression was that was going to be now the, the, the function facility in front, where everybody used to come into the, to the facility, and then in the back was going to be the Members Lounge. The building inspector was under that impression, when he was informed, no, this is a full liquor license, it's one, it's going to be open, you know, daily. That was not his impression. When he was informed of that, that's when he.
Still, still the same use.
And the building inspector doesn't have any bearing on that.
So I think maybe what we, I, I, I'll leave it to the board at this point, because I, I think it's, it's something that we can work with, but it's not in a form.
If you would, you're manager and, and members of the board. I wanted to, again, I had two points to make, okay? One was the, the late notice regarding the, the inspector. But the other was, your other point, okay, which was that we could work with the town manager to hash out the differences that we have regarding the propriety of the application as it stands now, so that we can have a vote on an application that is, that we're all content with sending to the A B C C. So that is not unreasonable, so that, I just wanted to make that point, so.
Part of that will be inclusion of the American Legion.
Right here.
Yes, some sort of a letter from the National American Legion, this corporate structure.
National has nothing to do with it.
They don't deal with buildings.
They don't deal with buildings at all.
The American Legion, state or national, whatever.
You just said ninety percent of them don't do that.
I'm getting that directly from the A B C C, so if you don't want to get that, that's fine, too. I'm trying to be helpful, because I think the A B C C is going to want to know that the American Legion organization.
Does not object to a for-profit.
Does not object to the, the corporate staff of this.
Wouldn't that be, that ought to be the application process?
I'm going to, I'm going to shut this off, I have some.
A question. If we were to approve it, it goes to the A B C C?
Correct.
They reject it, and it comes back here, you have to refile again. What is quicker, either fixing it right the first time, this time?
Fixing it right the first time. I, I don't object, I think that's reasonable.
I don't know how long it takes for them to review it, and they kick it back to you, and then you stop the process over.
So this is a public hearing?
So why can't, I'm not against this, but there are questions of profit, nonprofit, that I still have a question about.
I, I understand.
So if you kick it up and they state, if, they kick it up to the state and they say no, then it's coming back here. So can we stop and save a step by getting it right?
The only big hurdle is going from the corporation now to a nonprofit, because that takes, I mean, we know the IRS is working. That was one of the hurdles, why it's this way.
But, well, if we do approve this, and they turn it down, you're still going to have to go back and do that. So why can't you start that process now, so we can get you back here in less than a month, or quicker?
It sounds to me that they could just be taking off the, the non off of one of the pages.
Right, so why can't that be fixed, so we can then move forward?
If it's a matter of.
I want to recognize a couple people have the hand up.
Yeah, but, I just, I think Paul stated that they consulted the A B C C, and this is the way they.
Correct.
Well, they also consulted as well, and we're getting mixed signals, so I, I like the, the, it wasn't in the form of a motion, but I, I, I'm leaning toward what Select Machine has indicated and what the attorney thinks is reasonable, but, Vinny, you also.
I'd also respect it, because I've also worked in that type of business in my past, too, and having for-profit, nonprofit hybrids, too. You need to kick it up to the state, in my opinion, because you kick it up to the state, they know the exact rule, how Cyril Morissette has been used, how William Macati detachment has been used, and how they separated, the state would know how to do it. Yes, you know, it'd be great to get us to fix it, they're the experts. I've gone to many A B C C hearings with Seven-Eleven, when I was working there before, it's better to kick it up to the state, and if there's a change, if it's a matter of just changing it from nonprofit to profit, it's easy paperwork that we can kick it up to the state. If they decide to go through, you have all three levels, A B C C, what do you call it, the Attorney General's Office, that's going to have to review that, too. So you have all their market on it. They look at it as a whole, not just, you know, I think that's, you take this, they have to work on it as a whole. Once they get that, then we'll know where it is. I, I, I'm in favor of kicking it up, but.
Vinny, if you've had experience, how long, if they do kick it back, how long does it take before it comes back to this board, and then they have to change everything and go through the process again?
I've seen two weeks. I've, I've seen it in two weeks, I've seen it in two months. It, it all depends on the situation where they've sat there, and, you know, they have Attorney Clifford and, and all the paperwork that they have. I'm pretty sure it would be a fast process, especially where they have the discussion where they've had with the A B C C right now. I think that if they set it up, and if it's wrong, it could be a matter of just paperwork, they would have to come back here.
I understand.
They would even need to do a hearing, because what we did in front of the A B C C, all you have to do is refile the application with the town, and then just put it up that way.
I just want to get all the hands. I'm sorry, did you want to?
Yeah, we'll continue on. Paul, the person you talked to at the A B C C, is that the person, did you talk to the person, or do you go, do you have that person's name that might?
I spoke with an agent, I don't have the name with me, though.
But you can still contact that person to see if?
It, it's somebody different every time. I mean, there's five or six people in each department, it's whoever's available, but, I mean, I spoke with, yeah, the A B C C, somebody from the Secretary of State, the IRS federally, and at state level. I mean, there's two different, the app, you know, the application we worked on for a long time.
I know, the state's difficult, but I'm just trying to see which is the quicker way to get things, so it's.
I would kick it, in my personal opinion, I think we should, we should vote and let the state handle it.
Yeah, I was just saying, the A B C C, my father was an A B C C investigator for four years, so I grew up there. They are, it's, you were asking how long, it depends on how much paperwork they have. They could have a hundred and fifty licenses that they're looking at, they could have ours. You don't know how busy they are, you don't know how much, you know what I mean, I've been in there, there's been a hundred and fifty, somebody makes a phone call, all of a sudden, yours is on top. You know what I mean, it's all, I'm serious, I mean, that's all, it's all in who you know, you know what I'm saying? It's like any other agency, like any other city. I grew up there, all my, everybody I know is A B C C investigators, and I know all about it. It's all like, there could be fifty applications on a desk, they could be ours. We, they could call us next week, they could call us in two months. I mean, it's all how busy they are, we don't know how busy they are, we don't know what they got going on, you know?
Anybody else, it's a public hearing.
Yeah, with, I think this is just great, and I think we can work this out, but I think if some of you haven't been up there, you need to go up there, it's amazing what these guys have done. I mean, and it's.
It's not me and Paul, and not to put my friend on the spot, but Paul Kennedy has viewed, has been a part of the Legion with Mike Kennedy since we started this. And throughout the past month, which has been the most emotional time of my life, that place was our meeting ground for everything that we've been going through, and it still is. And he is a town resident, so that's why I got offended if you say that it's a bar and a grill, because it's not. It's a part of the community, it's a part of us, it's a part of what we do, and we want to do good things. The only thing I can suggest is why don't we do both? Why don't we send it up to the state, and then we'll work, and if there is discrepancies, that can be our backup plan, that way we don't lose time. Kicking it back and having a letter from, from whoever's saying something the day of is just stalling techniques, and it's unfair.
There's, there's no effort.
Look, I can only speak for myself, certainly not against veterans, I'm a veteran myself, we just want to get it right. I came in this, late this afternoon, went through my package, and this document from the building inspector was one of the many that I looked at.
We've been trying to work with the town since we started, okay? We've gotten, these are the people that we've gotten to back us up in what we do.
John?
Mr. Gordon, the only thing I just have to say is, I've been dealing with this for twelve years, and you got to get the paperwork in front of the boss. Somebody, because only the boss, no, you call any of these agencies, you got ten people working for them, you get ten different answers. You got to put it front, what I'm asking is, oh, yes, put it in front of the A B C, and let them tell us exactly, line by line, what the problem is, because that's the only way we got the IRS to square it away, that's the only way we got the state to square it away, is the head guy looked at it, said, you can't do this, because of what Mr. Phelan's saying, or you can do this.
And that's where the town should work and help us, so if the A B C C calls the town, they're like, oh, okay, we, we discussed that in the meeting, and we kind of anticipated this as an issue, and this is how we plan on fixing it. So what is the most expeditious way to fix this?
Kevin, you didn't have a hearing.
Yeah, it's, it's, it's hard as an official to vote yes when you know it's going to get kicked back. I, I can't vote yes for something that's going to get kicked back.
We don't know. We don't know.
The only thing I have to say, can I, one more thing, is we've been operating as a for-profit with the club license for the last fourteen years, so you're not doing anything that wasn't already done for the last fourteen years.
The only thing that's changed is the names on the for-profit structure.
You know, this is, this is the same, the churches do this all the time, Winthrop, I know, St. Joe's, if you have a church, the churches are nonprofits, but if they have any raffles, you have to claim that as a for-profit thing. You have to pay taxes on that money that the for-profit, for-profit part of the church raised. Now, when the churches have these fairs, they have some expenses to buy the food and whatnot, but over and above that, everything goes back to the church. It, it's the exact same thing here.
We're talking about clerics.
That's, that's the issue I have, is the clerical part, and that's why I don't know if it could be straightened out in the last.
And that's why, and I know this might not be popular with everyone in this room, but my impression that I, that I have from, from the board and from the town manager is that, that there's a, a, a good deal of support, but that you're not comfortable with the application as it stands. My understanding is that changing the status from profit to, I'm sorry, from nonprofit to profit with the Secretary of State should, should not take much time at all. That being said, then we have the issue of, of getting a letter from the American Legion, which should also not take much time at all. I don't know where we stand on the, on the issue with the town inspector, but as to those two marching orders, I, I think we can, we can clear that up expeditiously, and, and I would even suggest perhaps continuing this meeting for thirty days, and, and reconvening with, uh, an application that's satisfactory to the board.
If we, if we do that, I caution, I, I think the American Legion, I mean, there's two separate things going on, it's the intention of what, what, what everybody's trying to do, and it's what legally is going to happen if this is passed in its current position. I want to make sure the American Legion Post understands the total application and exactly what's being requested here, because, so I, I agree with you, I think, too, too, but I think a new application might be necessary, because the applicant was the nonprofit, and the, it was, well, let me just say, the applicant, the name of, that the, that the application was made under is a nonprofit corporation, and the federal I D. number that was used does not match the corporate, corporate Secretary of State filings for that corporation.
The state filings are.
So there's two separate entities, a nonprofit and a profit. The nonprofit name applied for a liquor license with the for-profits social security number.
So that's a.
I think what has to happen is, what your counsel suggested was, a for-profit corporation has to apply for a for-profit, for-profit license, this is what I understand in talking with the A B C C, and there has to be an indication from the American Legion that that is okay, because the way it's set up, like I said, there's nothing that indicates other than eighty percent profit goes to Mr. Hinz, age of twenty percent to Mr. Nelson.
There's no mention of profit at all, it says stockholders.
My definition of stockholder is profit share.
But, that's, that's a profit, I, I guess is.
Paul?
So I, I just want to make sure, so that's what, that's what would be needed, change it, change the applicant's name, and get a letter indicating, because I think that's what the A B C C is going to want.
If I may read the name, I remember both.
Hold on, I just, Dan, I wanted to comment.
We meet in two weeks, that gives you next, can you, we can put you on the gender in two weeks, can you get this fixed within a week? We're looking for, you looking for speed?
Dan, I can get this fixed with a bottle of whiteout in fifteen seconds. It's, it's literally, it's literally the name. One, one says W N B Dalton Post one-three-seven, American Legion Building Association, Inc. The other one says Building Association of William B Dalton, American Legion, Inc.
Right, but that's also filed in the state, because that also goes to the state.
There's, there's one that says the nonprofit is one name like that, and the for-profit is for the other, so that was a typo, it, it's the, the tax I D. number is correct, it's literally a, a matter of swapping around three, three words on that cover title. Tax I D.'s correct, filings are correct, everything, they match.
Right, Paul, we're not going to rush, we got, if you can wait a week, a week, are we, two weeks from today?
Yeah, no, absolutely. Yeah, no, absolutely.
Get it right, let's get it right the first time. Oh, sorry.
I want to get it right.
Okay, okay, so I just want to stress.
If they don't want to come back on us, in all due, we want...
But again, we risk that getting kicked back from the state.
If you can get it back to us, we're gonna put you on the agenda and vote on it.
And I would like to ask if your council and Bill can get together. I just don't want to come back with two different sets of stories from the AVCC. I want, I want to make sure that we all understand the full story, the corporation structure, whatever the open issues are that, Bill, you brought up, that were brought up by council and by Mr. Anastasio and Mr. Nelson, if we can, if we can sort of work through them so that the, so that the board has good, solid, you know, facts that are recognized by both sides.
And the intent is to have a license issued to an entity whose profits will go to the American Legion, is that correct? Okay, so it's just to have a...
Yeah, whatever their arrangement is, is their arrangement.
Is their arrangement.
We can't dictate, okay, so it's not, it's not, it's just, it's a regular...
That's the club business.
I want it to be...
We don't care, you know, we just want to make sure that the applications read correct.
And that the American Legion is okay with it.
Right.
We will do more veterans' things than this town has done in the past 10 years, probably within the first two years.
I believe you, I do believe you.
I just wanted to say, one of the huge problems were, there was a building association that was for-profit, a building association that was nonprofit, they're both operating under the same name. So there's two separate organizations, a for-profit and nonprofit. That's why we had a huge problem getting a clear title for the building, and why attorney Merican, like, two years to square that thing away.
But there's only one now!
But we were operating under a for-profit organization for the last 14 years.
So, anything else?
Where the hula hoops gonna be in two weeks that we have to jump through?
Hold on, Vinnie first. I'm sorry, I didn't understand.
When we meet here in two weeks, what are the new issues gonna be that you guys come up with that is a problem?
I don't have a response.
Just some clarity for us. You know that I work here in town, and I've dealt with this before. So we're crystal clear, when we make these wording changes, what is the board's stance gonna be on this? If we're coming back in two weeks, if you're just extending this for two weeks from now, I think this is what our concern is, that there's gonna be some other issue, or some other letter that pops up. That needs to be worked out now, that if, all we're looking for is the wording correction, and that's what you're telling me, is that if we change that wording with the attorney, we're gonna be good to go. Is that what we're saying?
I want to make sure I get all the facts. If their lawyer sits down with the town administrator, a whole book of officials, there could be other things that come up. That's why they're doing that.
Both sides get together. My understanding is, the only issue is not that wording, on the license, correct?
Yeah, but we had a couple of other issues that came up that they gotta work on.
But that's all staying, this is more clarification, that's all staying with issues of how it's built.
It's not, no, it's different.
In my past experience, what we've done, we've sent it up forward.
I just want one at a time, please, I've got Vinnie talking right now.
We forwarded up saying the board, Sluckman, or the city of Quincy, or whoever it was that we were dealing with, is decided to agree on this based on the exact correct wording that it needs to be to have both the for-profit and nonprofit together. So you would be voting based on the exact changes. You could have an addendum to your vote saying that you are for this. You do the vote saying, "Yes, I am for this," but it needs to be, make sure that it's structured correct as nonprofit, for-profit, however it's supposed to be specified. But you can make that vote with that addendum in there, and the state is the one that says, "Okay, we need to just have you fix this," or they may say it is exactly how it's supposed to be done. Because they will contact the AVCC, and we could also have Mr. Fallon or Mr. Clifford also being culminated on that. But once you pick it up to there, they have to go through that due process of making sure that it's classified, federal ID, all that stuff. But once they set up, if you make the vote yes based on the certain addendum changes and have a one-page cover letter along with that, it would suffice. That's what we've done before, what I've done before.
If the agreement is, between all the different parties, that we reassess this meeting, and they give two weeks to straighten out the application, my suggestion would also be to instruct the building commissioner to do everything he needs to do, understanding that it's gonna be rezoned or it's a different use than he originally had inspected so that we don't get another letter at the last minute. So he has two weeks as well to ensure that...
But, you know...
From a building commissioner's standpoint, a building commissioner should be able to...
Building commissioner.
Should be able to do everything that he needs to do.
Health inspector, inspector.
He didn't even cite what the change of use is in that letter.
I just don't think it can be straightened out too much.
No, but he didn't even cite what the change of use is. He's not here to make his point. What are the changes of use? It's not even cited.
That's what we're going to figure out over the next...
The health inspector's dressed up.
We ourselves.
Now, you said, Phil, a question.
Hold on, I got one ball in the door, asking a question of the town administrator.
Do we still even, if you're gonna have a, run into this for-profit, and we decide to go upstairs, it's for-profit, downstairs, it's nonprofit, are we gonna have to get a club license from downstairs? And then there'll be a for-profit license upstairs? Will it be two separate?
Yeah, I don't know the answer.
I think you had an answer to that. Council had an answer to that.
The suggestion intention is I don't think the board has an issue.
Well, two things that I wanted to address. One is, you know, having some clarification from the inspector, exactly what the issue is and how to deal with it. What I'd like, if possible, is, you've given us our marching orders regarding the two requirements that we previously discussed. What are the marching orders regarding that inspection? Are you suggesting that there needs to be a new inspection of the facility? Is that what you're claiming? And then lastly...
Yes, according to the letter.
And then, and then lastly, I understand the town manager's legal arguments. I understand his concern regarding notice. What I would think would be the best way to come back here and present to you the most detailed and wholesome application is to have me sit down with the town manager and discuss the town's needs and reapply. And hopefully we can expeditiously move forward and get a date within five or six weeks where everything is addressed. If there needs to be a new inspection, that's addressed. If all the issues regarding the American Legion are addressed, all the issues we discussed are addressed. I've had a sit-down with Mr. Fallon, and I think at that point, we'll be presenting to the board something that the board will hopefully approve.
I don't, I'm missing what it is that the intention is for this facility. Whatever it is, then we can, I have to understand what I'm working you, what you do.
The intention of the facility is that there will be an American Legion present in the facility, and it will have a, or the building will have a for-profit bar that is open to the public, that Legion members and the public can patronize.
And what's the...
To raise funds for the veterans.
What's the American Legion portion of it?
The, it's the same as it is in any other American Legion or VFW or DAV. It allows the American Legion to have a social aspect that involves the responsible consumption of alcohol without them having to expose themselves to liability, without them having to deal specifically with the hassle. They have a private entity to do it.
With all due respect, how is that different than the halfway cafe? And I mean that respectfully.
Because it's akin to every other, or not every other, but many other veterans' posts. It's just like, and again, the other Legion posts that he indicated earlier in his statements to the member of the town, 17 years, when he indicated that many of the posts have function halls and have buys that are separate from the Legion membership.
That's what I'm trying to figure, is this gonna happen?
Phil, I'd like, I'd like for the two of you to meet and to hash this out and discuss these differences that, I know you've had conversations with the AVCC, they have. It sounds like the responses have not been consistent. So, I'd like, as the council said, for you two to meet sooner rather than later and identify, you know, identify the issues with the application that have been brought up, clarify it, and address the other items that you articulated regarding the letter from the American Legion.
I'm comfortable doing that. My only concern right now is I feel like we just pressed reset. I'm not sure we made any progress, because I'm not sure that we're, we have a meeting of the minds on what it is that we're proposing to involve the town. But... And I think, and as I stated before, no one's gonna know what we need until the two of you are on a conference call with the AVCC to figure out what you need. And from there, you'll hear it from their mouth, and then the two of you will figure out what needs to happen here.
The AVCC provides an application, it's complete. Also, this letter from the building inspector, that is fine. The page, they're both business class, business commercially zoned. Both a private club and entertainment recreational facilities operated as a business began, including but not limited to restaurants, bowling alley, theater, a sport arena, dance hall. I mean, it's...
It's an allowable use, I agree. That doesn't mean there's a lot of change.
I'm too invested, and I just want to say the difference between the American Legion and what's involved, and I've been involved over the last probably five years helping veterans who are coming home disabled, just as the gentleman you met earlier. They're frustrated, Ameri, just like Vietnam, when they, you know, the soldiers weren't welcomed back with love and the caring and the community, the sense of community. Our soldiers are coming home with post-traumatic stress disorder, some of them, you know, losing limbs, and they don't have a sense. So that's the difference between the halfway cafe and the American Legion. Is, we want to embrace our soldiers, we want to have, you know, maybe some therapy for them, not only, you know, special meetings for these soldiers, but also a place where they can gather and communicate. Communicate with one another. That's the difference between the halfway cafe and the American Legion.
But certainly you don't want to profit off it, right?
Please do not.
Look back to that, honestly, you want to have an offer to cover your expenses.
The American Legion can't run unless it's funded.
But you don't want to profit from that. That's my point. Under the town structure, you would be profiting from it. So, whatever, you wanted to profit.
If that's a problem to the town manager, I'm not sure what we're gonna do.
I'd like you to flush it out. I would like, as Chairman Moore had mentioned, that if you can get... I want to make sure that the AVCC, that all the issues we have, that what we're going to submit will meet all of their requirements, and everything is ticked and tied, and that the issue with, that was requested, which I think is a good one regarding some communication from the American Legion, saying that they're aware of this application and...
The American Legion's here, these guys are from the State House.
I need one of the liquor licenses, Marissa, in Quincy. First of all, with the American Legion, congressionally chartered as a nonprofit, that will always stay the same. In the law school, 101, we do have two problems here. We have a building associated incorporated, we have American Legion incorporated. That's two corporate entities that technically have to be straightened out. As Paul said, a rubber, a whiteout can take care of it when you redo it. The other thing with the ABCD is, the AVCC, is you're gonna be applying for a private license, a club license, which means it's a jury membership. Now, when you incorporate, and you get the approval, and then the articles of incorporation with the American Legion, you're saying that this building, it exists, and it doesn't make any difference if it's a bar, if it's a function hall, or if it's a go-kart track. The profit made from that business, for-profit business being run by that building association on behalf of the Legion, those profits are intended in the bylaws to go back into the programs of the American Legion. That's the only reason that corporation exists.
Right, that's all I want to hear. The American Legion will not come back and endorse a bar or any other program.
They stay...
Thank you. That clarifies for me, so let's get that done. Let's work to get that done, and I'm, I'll work as hard as I have to convince the AVCC and everybody else to get that done, and I understand that, that... But just as long as you understand, I agree with you on that one, and that's what I was trying to clarify.
And I'll issue, if I may, one, just one more caution while we're doing this. When you're doing the license for the AVCC, for some reason, it's like the IRS now. They are targeting the veterans' organizations, because a lot of the veterans' organizations have people coming in who are not members. Fact of the matter is, we can't keep the doors open if we don't have non-members coming in. So you have associate members, and things like that, because if you have somebody that comes into your post as a guest, according to the AVCC, a guest cannot buy a drink in there, can't pull his wallet out, in which case you'll never make any money that way. So you need to be careful saying that we want to open to the public. That's not the terminology you want. You're opening a bar and a function hall, and we will rent. That's its purpose. The only place you're gonna get the rentals is from the public. But that's the business of doing it. If you mention in this that you are opening this to the public, then you are not a private club, and you are not a private club licensed candidate.
Right, we didn't know why.
Right, so just make sure that...
That's why we did it that way, because we don't want any smoke and mirrors like the Legion has been ran for the past 30 years. Everybody could walk into that post. Most posts are like that. We're doing the right thing.
And your original charter had it, so it was all set that way.
And we've gone on...
And that's true, but it can't be grandfathered, it's a whole thing again.
By virtue of all of the profits going back into the American Legion, we now have a nonprofit. So, you know, but that's not what we're proposing. We're proposing a for-profit, we're not proposing that all the profits are going to go back into the American Legion. Because when you, when you do that, what ends up happening is you don't get people who are motivated by some of their own income, okay? So if you want a facility that's gonna run well and that's gonna run effectively, there needs to be some profit. So that's what we're proposing.
The profit in the organization takes care of its overhead, first of all. Anything else that's into the profit category...
That's called a nonprofit corporation.
Then becomes a donation to the 503(c), back to the American Legion. That's how you do it from the profit side, to keep everything nice and clean.
This is the disconnect that I'm, that we're trying to flush out here.
And the American Legion, I think, sees that.
I don't know if he speaks for the American Legion respectfully.
Well, he did a second ago when you said you had the American Legion here.
I used to, I used to have...
Who didn't want to speak?
I'm sorry.
You know, I think it's a healthy discussion, I think there's, I think we're getting closer. But, I want to be careful on how I say this. I think we can correct these administrative things on these forms, but we still have the challenge with building inspector, and we need to address...
I don't think that's a big challenge, frankly. I think that's a, I don't know, I'm guessing that that's an inspection requirement.
I'm just saying, that needs to be, you know, taken...
Well, I think the way that letter read was, at the end, if this is voted in for of, please keep in mind, it's still only 100 people or 99 people, I mean, that was not... The in conclusion of it, I mean, I would like...
A change of the use from a private club to a public club, that's the change in use.
Yeah, the change of use, I was expecting is by state.
You're just changing from a club, so now you're inviting all that out, members to it, so that's the only change.
But that's different definitions of a change in use.
The change of use by the state...
Like in the building code, and then...
Building code is like a change of use from a restaurant, discotheque, or place of assembly. That's why fire code, mass state building codes, which are being adopted, you know, across the country. That's a town bylaw which basically states, the state starts off saying, "These are what we have in town." So we change from this in the town to that, but by the state, it's the same.
But we have to comply with our local ordinances as well, so that's why we need to reach out to the building inspector and take care of it.
Which, if you look on that, that both commercially and business zone, so there shouldn't be any issue at all.
No, it's just a change of use from a private, because you want the public to come in, that's not members, so now it becomes a public gathering place.
Well, it was never presented as a showstopper, it was just another item that we needed to... button down.
So, I mean, I would like to, as far as, Matt and I are the only ones in the board that know how that thing was filled out in the intention, and I think we made it pretty clear. Bill did it, you know, town manager did a lot of talking, you know, Attorney Clifford did a lot of talking, the American Legion did, but the intention is, we wanna keep it exactly the way it was. I'm not looking to reinvent the wheel. If we have to reapply for a nonprofit federally, like Matt said, it can take years to do that, like years to do that, to get a tax ID number.
Then townspeople aren't gonna be allowed into the place.
But I'm proposing that just change what they... Talk about what your own attorney had said, too. Just change anything.
You heard what he said, and the intention, and how it should be set up. Do you agree with that? You heard him speak, and how...
Dalton was set up for you.
How the profits after the overhead go to the American Legion. Do you agree with that?
I agree with that, but...
You do?
But the way that's set up is the way it's staying. There's nothing to change on that application, other than the discrepancy in WM Dalton or William B Dalton.
That's where I think the conflict is.
Because I can't create...
Because the intention is not the conflict.
We can't create state documents. I mean, it's been the same exact way, Bill, and there's nothing different, other than a typo on the name. Tax ID number checks out, everything checks out with the for-profit. I mean...
Shareholders could be listed as the American Legion, possibly.
It's Legion business.
It is Legion business.
Honestly, this is...
If it's Legion business, you put it on a state form, so now it's out, so we saw it. So, take it out.
Right, correct, right. So, then you have to petition the Legion to change the... Have the Legion membership change who's on the board directly.
I just want, I wanna make sure that everybody understands what's in the application, that's all. Because if it's as you say, that's fine, I understand that, and we can work to get that done. If it isn't, I want people to understand what's being presented and what's being voted on, that's all.
Well, I'd like to say, one, I appreciate the gentleman coming up. Absolutely. Thank you so much for coming up with this point. These men have their own posts, you know, they're... I'm not sure if they're all from the same post, but we're our post. And obviously, what's been going on the last 30 years at the William B Dalton is not working, because all they did was lose money, refinance the building, take out a huge mortgage, and they're in debt. And when me and Matt got involved, you know, we were four months behind in the mortgage, about to be foreclosed on. So, I mean, we decided to be proactive, thought we could make, you know, a great, you know, keep the prestige of the American Legion and have a patriotic home, and it should be the heart of the community. You know, I mean, every parade, everything you guys do, the American Legion is there. So, I don't know why we're driving a big wedge in between this. I don't wanna keep talking about applications.
You wanna make...
I mean, 'cause it's right. Other than that one thing, it's right. Send it up the chain of command, nobody in this...
Paul, if there's one thing that's not right, it's the numbers, so we gotta get it right.
The number's right? I'd send it to the state. They're gonna come back and say, hey, did you make a typo on this? Does it say this? Well, we can light it up right now.
I'm gonna go back to where we were about 15 minutes ago, with Counselor Bill and Paul, if you wanna be involved.
But the plan they're coming up with doesn't... We can't create a nonprofit out of the if. I mean, that's...
I have one. I have two, actually.
Yeah, but we, you know, we're not gonna rename a building and start a nonprofit. It's the American Legion, the building's set up for profit. It doesn't make any sense.
Tim, you know, I think it's really what Paul and Matt said at the beginning, what the intent is. There has to be, without beating a dead horse, there has to be a for-profit part of it to support the nonprofit of the Legion. After expenses, I think Matt was the one that stated it, after expenses, because there's a lot of expenses... They said very clearly that all the efforts, and all the money, all the efforts are going in to support the vets, and after expenses, all the money from the for-profit is going to the Legion to support veterans' causes in this community.
Okay, so, we have a motion to continue, so if we can address the issues.
I made a motion that we continue this meeting between the town administrator and the lawyer for the Dalton Post, continue to start as soon as possible.
We'll continue the hearing with the expectation that the parties involved will meet and will provide some clarity to the application, the intent, mission, etc. Any discussion?
Do you have a date on that?
May 7.
It's three weeks from today.
Motion on the floor, it's been seconded.
Will it be heard? Will this hearing be heard? Will it be a hearing just like this?
May 14.
And that's the change?
This is, we got a motion on the table, this is at the board level now. We'll brief on what it means and what the date is. We got a motion, it's seconded. All those in favor? All those opposed? Three to one. Okay, so, the expectation is that we'll get some clarity on these issues, that what is brought to us at the next public hearing will be a clear application package, a clear purpose with mission, and I'd like for there to be a conference call with the ABCC, so that we don't have any of this disconnect with the message that we're getting from the ABCC.
We'll have Jeff handle everything to the board's satisfaction, because we wanna do our intentions and make this country a better place.
If you may, sir, I may, can I add something to this? I met these gentlemen about a year ago. I was asked by the department to come to Holbrook to see what was going on over here. I met Paul. He took me into the building, I was very impressed with what they were doing. One question I had was if they were all legit veterans coming back, and they were all at the DD-214s. I had 30 of them checked, they were all legit. These gentlemen have done a hell of a job over there, and I hate to see the town of Holbrook lose a veterans' post. Their job, what they're trying to do is to get this veterans' post back on its feet, and let the veterans know that they're still there. This is not, I don't see it as just people coming in to drink there and have a fun time. I think they're legit, they really wanna do good for the veterans, not just that, but the town of Holbrook and the community itself. So, I think they've done a hell of a job, I'm very impressed. I swore them all in last March, and I'm telling you, very impressed with what they've done. And I think you should... Tim, I'd like to add one thing, real quick. I'll second that, I've seen it, and I think it was Matt or Paul, a couple weeks ago, we had a fundraiser for a female soldier who's a double amputee. And if we had this up and running in Holbrook, and we had this facility going, we could've had that in Holbrook, and it could've brought some good press, but we had to have it over in Weymouth. So, whatever support you guys can provide, we appreciate it.
All right, we continue that hearing. Now, we have another hearing to open. So, I'll read the statement.
Is that already closed? I'd just like to add one.
Go ahead.
So, the hearing's in three weeks, and it'll be heard just like this?
Yes, yes.
Okay. Now, also, I mean, if this gets delayed again after that, for whatever reasons, we can't carry this building any longer. I mean, the money tree's empty, it's been a year and a half. I mean, it's huge, a huge amount of money invested in this.
Well, this is, keep in mind, this is the first time you've come to us here, and I think we got some reasonable point... It's not like we've been delaying this for months on our end. We've been, it was on our agenda for tonight, for the first time.
And we appreciate that, but it doesn't have to be like this, like, jeez, I gotta go home, take three Xanax to relax, Tim. This is crazy. You know, people shouldn't have to feel like this, we should just...
Well, I think we've been pretty reasonable and open, and had a good conversation, that's how I... Okay, notice is hereby given under Chapter 140 of the Mass General Law. The court is likely to hold a public hearing on the application of the building association of William B Dalton American Legion Post for common pick license in order to serve prepared food, an automatic amusement device license for seven video games, an entertainment license for live entertainment, electric, patron dancing speakers, and fundraisers. And I have a motion to open the public hearing. All those in favor? So, this is, obviously goes with the other...
Right, I would suggest that we continue to the same date.
Entertainment license, stuff. Food is... Health inspector is on it. Common pick license. You guys can get stove, you can get stove in there. Is there gonna be a stove? Is it going to be a stove?
There's not one currently, but we know if there is one, that's another inspection with Board of Health and...
Because if you're gonna be cooking, or...
Yeah, once revenue comes up, we're gonna operate the kitchen.
So, you're gonna have a stove, and it's reflected in your design, right?
Yeah. In the Board of Health, we talked to him, he said, when you get the stove, just come back, I'll come back, make sure that's up to par, and then you can operate it.
Okay. Any further discussion? Do you think these are all three on the vote? I move that we accept the license, or approve the license, common pick license, in order to serve prepared foods to the building association of William B Dalton American Post 137 Incorporated, residing at 777 Plymouth Street, Holbrook, Massachusetts. Any discussion?
All those in favor?
No. Motion passed. I move that we approve the automatic amusement device license for seven video game machines in the name of the building association of William B Dalton American Legion Post 137 Incorporated, residing at 777 Plymouth Street, Holbrook, Massachusetts.
All those in favor?
Motion passed. I move that we accept the entertainment license for live entertainment, electric or acoustic, patron dancing, speakers and fundraisers, in the name of the building association of William B Dalton American Legion Post 137 Incorporated, residing at 777 Plymouth Street, Holbrook, Massachusetts.
This one, you need to decide on the hours, and you might wanna wait till you did the alcohol, decide on the hours on that.
Some of the hours...
Some of these hours are not a matter of right under an alcohol incident. So, I don't know whether that's what the board wants to do.
Are there hours? Oh, there are no hours referenced here.
There's no hours, but the hours, Sunday for entertainment, if there's liquor involved, is not allowed by law for anyone, so. There's issues Sunday. There's certain hours that you have to just amend the hours.
They're asking till 1:00 a.m.
What is, what's the...
Not a bylaw, it's state law.
What's the state law?
State law for alcohol. 11 to 11 is a matter of right.
For Sunday.
Monday through Friday, Monday through Saturday. And on Sunday, starting at noon...
To 11?
They're asking to go till 1:00. So, you would have to grant them the permission to do the hours from 1:00.
So, it's 11 to 11, Monday through Saturday, and 12 to...
That's as a matter of right, but you can grant to 1:00. You can grant until 1:00 with liquor?
Yeah.
With liquor. So, right now, 11, if the liquor license is granted eventually...
What do the other ones in town have? What does have, should they have entertainment licenses where they...
HAC.
Holbrook, the Halfway Cafe?
Halfway does, do the black music.
Yeah. So, what time does that one is?
1:00 a.m.? 1:00 a.m. The motion's on 11, and they're willing to get their license close to 1:00, right?
Yep.
Give them a mandate to 1:00.
So, for 1:00 a.m., so they can get a license now, amend it when they get liquor licenses.
I don't have a problem with permitting the liquor license, which is probably gonna be the one.
So, all right, I'm sorry, what's the...
12 a.m. to 11:00 to 1:00 a.m. on Sunday.
All right, so I move that we approve the entertainment license for live entertainment, electric or acoustic, patron dancing, and speakers and fundraisers, Monday through Saturday, 11 a.m. to 11 p.m. I'm sorry.
11 a.m. to 1:00.
11 a.m. to 1:00 a.m. on Sunday, 12 p.m. to 1:00 a.m. To the building association of William B Dalton American Legion Post 137 Incorporated, 777 Plymouth Street, Holbrook, Massachusetts.
Is there a second? The only question I have is, so, these other places, they can have entertainment on Sunday nights till 1:00? That's just surprising to me, but I've never been there at 1:00, so I...
Because they have it, doesn't mean they have to use it.
Okay, that's all I was hoping for. All right, so, all those in favor? Okay. All right, so now, motion for recess, and go back down to our meeting room on the court.